Call Council meeting, order regular council meeting.
March 1st, 2022. Is there any additions to the agenda? Any additions to the agenda? Citizen comments? No citizen comments. Adams Brown Baron or Adams Brown Audit Report. Should have a copy of that in front of you, I believe.
Can you hear us?
Yeah, kind of. Can you hear me okay?
Kind of. I might just get you right here.
Okay, how about, is that better?
Yep.
Okay. And I just want to thank you all for doing this remotely. I'm in Junction City auditing this week, so it just didn't work out for me to make it back to St. John. But we'll kind of just go through the audit report like we have in the past. I'm going to start with the letter that should be on the top of your bound copies. This is just our recommendation or governance letter. Basically, we go, we have to let you know if we had any difficulties, if we had any disagreements. We also have to let you know if we had any audit findings. And we don't have anything except for on page two or page three. We just note the segregation of duties like we have in the past. There's just not enough staff to completely segregate all of the administrative tasks to make sure you have a good system of internal control. So you've had this noted before, so this isn't anything new. And that would be the only thing that's really in the letter. And if you want to go ahead and flip to your bound copy. I'm just going to start on page one, two, and three. And this year, the independent auditors report, we had a whole new staff come out. That basically made us change the entire letter, but it's still very much the same as far as what it means. At the very first page, the very first two, three paragraphs is your opinion on the financials now. And you still receive an adverse opinion on GAAP because you do a GAAP waiver to follow regulatory basis. And you once again received an unmodified opinion on regulatory basis of accounting, which is the highest opinion or cleanest opinion you can receive. And basically, we don't believe there are any material misstatements in the financials. So then if you turn to page four, this is the financial that we issued that opinion on. And at the end of the year, you ended with an unencumbered cash of 4.4 million. And this is an increase over the prior year of 379,000. And as you are very aware of, it's mainly because of your utility surplus fund. Those bond proceeds have not been fully spent as of the end of the year. So your cash actually remained pretty much the same from the prior year. The next pages, pages five through 12, are the footnotes. K-MAG did not have any significant changes to the accounting policies or any new standards that came out. I'm not going to go through any of these specifically. We do have to also look at Kansas statute requirements. We did not have any violations this year, so there's nothing noted in there for that. If you turn to page 12, this is your long-term debt schedule. And as you can see, you now have the new GO bond on there. So at the end of the year, you ended with 1.5 million in debt. And you're expected to pay it off in 2033, which is actually your KDHE loan is longer than your new bond. But that is where you ended up, the end of December 31st. And then on page 13, this is your actual two-budget financial statement. You did not have any budget violations for the year. And then the next remaining pages are each individual fund. And it's just a comparison to the budget as well as to prior years, so you can see what's significantly fluctuated. And like I mentioned before, your cash is pretty much the same as the prior year. Any questions on anything specific that I can go over?
Questions for the council through the account? I think Jamie's doing an awful good job from what I read about that. Where'd she come in? Perfect, awful good, really.
Danielle's been keeping us in pretty good line.
I try. It's not too hard, though. They do a good job.
And if they have any other question, like if they go through it more and have more questions that I can't answer, we can always reach out to Danielle and get those answered. She's very good at getting back to us, so.
Yes, absolutely. And you can call me directly as well. I'd be happy to go through anything with you. I know it's a really quick recap when you're just now looking at it, so.
You didn't really get them off, or?
Huh? Do you have any questions? I don't think we've got any questions coming in.
We'll let you enjoy your evenings.
Okay, thank you. Have a good night.
See ya.
Thank you.
Bye.
Any questions about the audit? You want to talk about it?
Anything, anything Jamie, you talk about as far as your concern?
No, I mean, everything's going very well. Like I've told you guys before, the way that Pam and I have everything running is very smooth. We've gone through quite a few bumps and creases along the way. And I think we've been able to smooth those out pretty well with everything, so. The bond was a learning curve just because we hadn't dealt with it. But it wasn't anything for learning, so.
Any other questions? Comments?
So that's for, that is a CD and the interest, all of that can be spent down to Cornell Park.
Gotcha, gotcha. Same with the WIT Fund?
Yep, that's right.
Yep.
Only the interest occurred on it. And hell, well, the WIT Center Fund, I do believe that a certain-
It's 50 years, isn't it?
After a certain amount of years, that money can actually be spent at full if we so desire.
Yeah. And it, it's, I mean, watching the number, you know, this will be... The longer I'm here, the more interesting it is to watch the number. You know, costs are going up and our interest that we're getting off of those funds is going down significantly. So we're, you know, as the city is still having to step, which you guys are well aware, stepping up and maintaining the building a little bit and the parks and different things like that. But it's, yeah, interest rates are not being our friends on those funds.
Any other questions? Getting moving on, Consider Jiva, approve the minutes for regular council meeting, February 15th, 2022.
So moved.
You got a motion?
Second.
Second. All favor? All opposed. Passes four and zero. Okay. Appropriation orders. Three, one of 2022, 138,178.81. Pity cash, 408.92. Oilfield manufacturing factors, 7,143.54. Wesco, 8,307. And Van Dice, whatever that is, 8,308.50. I didn't have any motion. Make it toll in the back of here.
That come in kind of like about Jeff, I forget from last meeting as far as the bill or the oilfield manufacturer.
I think it did, Ryan. I've been going, so I didn't look it all over, but I went up and picked it up. So I'm pretty sure it's the same price. We did go back up and pick up a few hundred feet of one inch for some streetlight stuff that we're going to go ahead and try and put in the ground. But other than that, the original cost on the two and the four inches is right by the foot. Yeah.
You made a motion on that?
Some of it, yeah. Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor? All opposed. Passes four and all. Moving on, Department heads, elected department, Jeff.
I guess at this point in time, most of the material is here for our project. Pipes on the roller and the wires here. Got a few odds and ends that haven't showed up yet that have been delayed. But oh, some cabinets, well, some bases for some, for the pad mounts. They should be here yet this week sometime, but I went ahead and kind of, kind of did this on my own. We thought with, with Golden Belt doing the boring that I rented a mini excavator to dig the bell holes and that stuff out of the city's pocket to do it. I rented it for 30 days. It's $21.50. If we don't use it that long, we'll take it back. So, you know, we're planning on, if the weather permits, to get it stuck in, get it covered up, and, you know, get it ground back like it was. So get it tidied up in pretty good fashion. But whether we go ahead and get the wire pulled in right now or not, I don't know. We'll get all the conduit in, so. So we're ready to go. I mean, just as soon as, Amerun should be here in the morning, so. Anyway.
That'll probably work a lot better back there than your big back end.
Oh, I think it will. Yeah, you know, and then we can clean it up. And I think later on, if we want to, if we can rent a, oh, either like a rotivator or something to fluff that up and level it out and clean it up, you know. And then if we have to plant some grass back in, we'll do that, too. So I might want to rent a plow just to plow the streetlight wiring list, so we don't have to, we can just roll it in and cover it up and pack it and be done with it. And that, there won't be any overhead wire that way, too, so. Anyway, but I think everything's, you know, it's ready to go as far as I know. So anyway, we're going to have some poles replaced and some of that stuff, but.
How did you come up with that?
Well, we need a, we need a new easement for in between First Street and Second Street. It's basically a Bajalinda Roth's house and Regal's house, like where their shop sits a little bit back. Jeff's wanting to put that wire right in between there, so we're going to have to look at getting a utility easement there to connect. Are you connecting at the street or in the alley there?
In the alley, but south of First Street.
Right.
We're going to stay on the west half of that. We're going to stay under her driveway and along under the fence so that we don't crowd the other property. So it shouldn't be a big deal. We'll stick it in the ground far enough that it'll be under the drive, it should be fine, so.
And then?
But in order to energize that, I need to feed it through there and bring it up in that alley because where it feeds now, it feeds from Brad Ives's around by Rosenberg's and back up from the east end of that alley, we're going to feed it from the other direction, so. So we can take some overhead down there and clean that up, too, so.
I don't know. I learned a lot about easements in the last week and a half. You have underground easements, you have overhead easements, and St. John has no filed easements. So I'm giving you guys my knowledge that I've learned and I'm letting you roll with it, because.
In the end, the citizen that has the ground, they will be happier with it underground and less clutter of ground, right?
Oh, I think without a doubt, yeah. Yeah, I don't see any comparison whatsoever. I think we've got three poles in that alley between Second and Third that are rotted off now. You know, we're going to have to at least put two of them back in. One of them, because the service, the guy's service is sitting, hanging on that pole, and that pole's probably not that big around at the ground. So we'll go in and we'll lay it all off and we'll set a pole, then we'll put it back on, you know. But all in all, it'll be, it'll be so much nicer, so much nicer. We'll, you know, if we have a fall in the winter time, we don't have to get in there with a truck. So it'll make a whole lot of difference. Because the way they crowded that, I mean, they built it right to the middle. Well, you know, you've worked on part of that back in there. And I mean, it's crowded right up to the fence. So trying to get in there and set a pole would be almost impossible with the equipment that we've got, you know, without just destroying stuff. And this way, we can bore it in, bring it up in a cabinet, you know, clean it up, cover it up, be done, so.
So there'd be a cabinet behind you, Linda Roth?
No, it's coming up on the pole. And the reason it is is because she has a concrete patio. And so we're going to go overhead from the pole that's in the alley there back to her house and the rest of them on that block. We're going to bring a single phase up there so we can feed that alley both directions. And then the forelot will go on south. That's the circuit that feeds the air conditioner at the school. And it feeds up behind my house, Menace Chapel and all of that. So it's really the start of the circuit right there and where we build it around that corner, we've just had nothing but trouble. And the poles are sitting right on the back of the curb. If somebody smacks one, you know, we'll take out a lot of stuff, so. And they're not very good. They've been there since, probably since I first went to work here in the early 80s, I think is when we changed that, so. But it won't be out of sight and out of mind after this.
The poles will come down as soon as they take their stuff and our stuff off.
And, and I would like to request that the council put a deal in there that, you know, we've had problems in the past with CenturyLink. I don't know how many others have dealt with them, but it's a mess. It's constantly been a worse mess than what it ever used to be. But I'd like to put a stipulation in there that by 12:31, that all their stuff be removed out of those alleys and put in the ground, or we're going to wreck them out. Because if not, I think I've still got some poles down here north of the elevator from seven or eight years ago when we built that that they never transferred. I mean, they just, they won't come in and transfer. It's just a mess. And then if it falls over, we'll get a Saturday night call and it'll be, you know, like it always is, and then they won't fix it. So I think we're just going to have to put some teeth into it just to make sure that it's cleaned up and it's done right. I don't want to leave, I don't want to leave my customers that way, you know? And I don't think we should. So, I mean, it's not like they're not capable of, you know, they could have, we could have all done it all together, it would have been a whole lot easier, but they can't even get their locates done on time. I mean, it's a mess. That's the reason we had to wait for Amerun to come back tomorrow, because the locates were supposed to be done last week and they never showed up till Monday, so.
So CenturyLink will have to go back in there and trench and plow and wore in whatever they do.
Whatever they decide to do. If they've got any customers in there, I don't even know that they have any customers in there, you know? But a lot of that's overhead. I mean, and it's all on poles that, that are just not fit to have hardly anything hanging on, so.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think, you know, it's a day and age where you want to expect to have good quality stuff and you want it to, where it can be maintained, and that's, that's the way you do it. I mean, it costs more money to do it that way. We do it that way for a reason, so we don't have to worry about it, so. But.
Is that something you'd do if you have John dropped out for CenturyLink? So you'd hope it'd be fine? Yeah.
I mean, I'm, we're giving them almost 10 months. I mean, it ought to be more than sufficient enough time to do it, so. And just one other thing, I, some of you I've probably talked to and some of you I haven't. Bruce Merrihue, that was a panel board technician for Midstates Energy Works, the guys that are doing our Caterpillar, passed away a week ago, week and a half ago. I'm going to go to his service Friday, it's in Mankato. But I'd like to ask the city to let me put $50 in Hurt Leidman Fund in his name on behalf of the city. He's done a lot of work for us and we're going to lose him. I mean, it's, it's, it's a guy we're going to miss. He's done a lot of stuff down there. I met him in 1981 and we put that OP in. We're going to have to, it's probably going to slow our cap project down, I'm sure it probably will, but, you know, we'll do the best of what we can, so. Anyway, that's on.
I'm not, I'm not.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I've got, unless you've got something else. We're still trimming a few trees as we've got time, but, you know, this kind of took precedence for now, and then we'll get some days where we'll get back. We don't have a lot left to do, just some street stuff, so.
Do we need to make a motion on it?
No, it's not. It's not above this meeting.
Anything else for Jeff? Moving on. Jason, I think he's gone to a water meeting.
He's going to be gone the rest of the week, but he sent over, he got some, he got his map done of the, of the sewer that he wants looked at. And we still haven't had any news from the state for the water tower. The sewer mains have been sent to Austin. They got the mosquito stuff in. I guess I switched districts. He got the permit for Eighth Street and they're filling cracks with hot mix. And he said no word from Morgan Diesel. Bobby told me that he's talked to Morgan Diesel, so I'm going to call and double check those prices that, that have been discussed and try to have something back by the next meeting.
Do they have the truck?
No, it's here. Oh, I might tell you, too. I'll be gone Thursday. My brother-in-law passed away, for you guys that don't know, and so I'll be gone all day Thursday in Wichita, so.
Well, I was at the, over at the city office when Jason was talking to Morgan and I asked him, I said, because they were talking about a club and money, and I said, has anybody checked on a rebanned motor instead of overhauling that one? And everybody said no. So I, I made the comment that probably I'll see what a remane is, may be cheap. And it may not be a parcel.
That's just an old straight six cylinder Ford, isn't it?
I'm going to guess it is, or it's an old Continental, like it's on them old Lincoln pipeline welders, one of the two. It's about the same size.
I think it's an industrial Ford.
It's not like-
Yeah, probably six cylinder, yeah.
Probably a Ford industrial motor.
Yeah.
That's on the back, yeah. Just, I know that United Engine still does a lot of that stuff.
United Engine?
In Goddard. You know, so if it, whether they have one ready to go or not, or whether they can just take that one in a machine and rebuild it.
I'll, I'll try to get Morgan on the phone and then if that doesn't work, then we'll go with that.
But I think Jason was supposed to get him a serial number off of it, not whatever you've done there.
No, I can. Yeah, I'll get it taken care of tomorrow.
So the sewer maps, we send to them, they're going to give us a quote, quote, now?
Yep, he'll check everything over and.
Was it about similar?
Right around like 10,000.
So we'll see how much they've gone up, I guess.
Okay, everyone else?
Any questions for the street department or the water department, we'll try and answer the best we can.
You might ask Jason if there's any kind of stipulation or police and we can do on any kind of dumping of a sewer improper.
So I'm glad you brought that up. So we have had an issue with a certain block. I would like to say a couple years now. It's gotten substantially worse the last year for sure. I tried to have David get me a list of every time we've had to rot it. And he's pretty certain between us and mayors, it's been cleaned eight times since Memorial Weekend. I am high to believe that it's a person cooking food in bulk. I believe these people have been talked to. I actually just got word that it's affecting another customer sewer this morning. He just hasn't said anything to, to me about it. I know he's had to contact Davis in a couple times. But I have another issue with a water leak that I'm working on. And basically, it's just a letter stating like this is not okay per city code, blah, blah, like all of this. I'm, I'm going to just kind of start there and do that same letter with them and, and just let them know that it's, it's not okay. I mean, they had to, they had to go up there with the machine twice, I think, today even. And it's just big globs of grease. So, I mean, I want to start small because obviously it's, and I don't know how exactly that will work, but it's food being cooked for a business, so.
So is that, is that sewer line named from Sixth Street all the way to Eighth Street? You know, in between?
Did they start at Sixth?
And Main? They start at Sixth and went north, but I don't know if they just went one block or two blocks.
I think they posted videos, I think.
Yeah, they did go up that.
They'd have had to go.
That's where they lost, that's where they lost that camera.
Well, I know that, is it just that block or is it blocked north to, you know, like?
I don't know whether they included the last block or not.
On, on, from.
To Ninth?
On West Street from Sixth. I think they went clear to Ninth. And tied to Daniel. I, I know between. Yeah, I'm trying to. I know between, you know, Chavez's house and Clarion to the south block. Right. I didn't know north, you know? Is the issue is coming in between, got the? Six and Seven, is that right? Between Chavez's and Locks Out.
Eight and Ninth.
Eight and Ninth. Probably between Seventh and Ninth.
Right.
And there's been problems up there in the past and you leave before this.
Yeah, part of the sewer line is all gone. But the other problem is grease. I just want to, I, I know Jason mentioned it before, you know, what can we do?
I think they were still up there when we went home today.
Yeah.
We're there this morning and we're back up there at the South, yeah.
I'll look all that up.
I don't remember for that, that map. I'm trying to remember where, how far we went, but I don't.
I'll get them, I'll find the map tomorrow and send it out for you guys for a refresher because I got one there. I am, too, because I know one night we were driving around on the golf cart and they were there. But I can't remember if it was in between that block or my block over.
Any other questions or discussion? Police chief, Torres. Bar chief, Mark.
I need to add Michael Craven to the roster.
I'd make a motion to add Michael Craven to the fire department.
Second.
Got a motion, Maron, the second, but, all favor? All opposed. Passes four and all.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Mark. Jamie?
We need to appoint a president. Or reappoint a president. Your choice.
Bob needs to.
I appoint Marshall Sanders president of council.
See, that's what the government's calling.
I'm fine with doing that.
Do we need to vote on it?
Yeah. Somebody has to make a motion.
Everybody's got to make a motion.
I make a motion to appoint Marshall Sanders to council president.
Got a motion and a second to elect Marshall Sanders to president of council. All favor? All opposed. Passes four and all.
May I please have a motion authorizing Bobby to be on our signature card at the bank, please?
Some of them. Second.
Got a motion and a second on the table. All papers? All opposed. Passes four and all.
I will more than likely be gone the next meeting. I have conference that week, but I'll have Pam here and everything ready for you guys. I think that's it. We're strong leads on Jubilee. Actually, talking about Jubilee, I have bounce houses hopefully reserved for that weekend. We are throwing around the idea of possibly, we don't know necessarily if we want to do, like, try to do like armbands or if this could just be like a fun year. And we were going to maybe see if the city wanted to pay for the bounce houses to come. And then every, like, the kids can, it can just be like a free-for-all. We might have like donation jars set up, but it just be more of a laid-back, they can go play in the bounce houses. We're looking at getting a bunch of games set up and, and just have it kind of be more of a old time, like, not really old time, but.
Village.
Yeah. So if, if council would maybe think about that, it doesn't have to be decided tonight. I think the total-
I think the total was $3,600. I had to put down a $600 deposit, so I think it would be like three, and, and the Jubilee fund can, can handle that. I just don't wanna completely drain the Jubilee fund, um, one year, cause the carnival can't come, so. But that's just some ideas that we're throwing around. I know a lot of people have had ideas and they're coming to us, so that's been awesome and, and helpful. So hopefully we'll have everything. It'll still be fun, we just have to make sure people are involved and ready to participate, so.
I would like to honestly see the council step up and help a little bit. Everybody's got kids and there's much, much to do for kids in town, especially coming off COVID. And I think the city, I think it'd entertain a lot of people. It's just my piece of work.
That's hard to handle, large crowd, and Jubilee, there's not. Nothing for the kids.
And I, like, I have the bouncy house, but there's gonna be eight different, I shouldn't say bouncy houses, there's eight different inflatables. And then there's a guy in Larned, he came for the Christmas parade, he had the, like, wagon thing that you can ride. So he'll bring that. And he has all sorts of like old carnival games, giant Jenga, giant colorful game, put your hands.
Twister.
Twister. So just like different things like that, where it would just be like, hey, we have helpers helping with these games. It's gonna be more, more involved, so. We're, I'm actually trying to get a petting zoo to come. If not, we have people in the community that are gonna step up and bring all their animals.
I'll bring my own donkey.
Hey, Mr. Jingles really enjoys being come.
He's a nice one.
You can ride him in a break.
I can't, but somebody.
Then Reese can.
Another look at a dump tank.
There used to be one floating around, I don't know whatever happened to it, we used to put it in the square, years ago.
We've been working with Tori and the rest of the police department to figure out, um, like, we have a lot of, like, departments kind of stepping up and, and that's what I've enjoyed the most, I think, about this is that's something that we've wanted before, is to get more people, more organizations involved and, and kind of bring the events to the event, so it's not just Pam and I having to put everything on. So I think that's kind of helped and. Dump tank got brought up, but I think it got vetoed out, so you'll like the new idea. You can tell me. I don't know what you ended up wanting to do, the pies? Yeah, so we're gonna do, we're gonna pay for pies in the face, so. That might be a little bit more fun than dunking. Dunk them, ooh, dunk the mayor, we could pie the mayor.
I will, uh, alter it to the feces on it.
Probably not a need, not, not gonna happen. I wouldn't waste my money if I was you. I'm pretty strong-minded on a lot of things and that would be one of them.
Donate a couple of cars, we've talked about doing like smash the car. We might use that as more of a actually getting funds, like, we would have to get all the glass out, obviously, to make.
That's not a problem.
Less of a mess, but then you pay $5 for three hits or, or whatever it is, so, just kind of.
They're free and if you just do a dollar and let them.
Yeah, smash away.
Smash away. I'm sure I can down multiple vehicles by then.
I just, I think I scared everyone when I said the carnival wasn't coming, because there's been a, a large uproar of Jubilee talk lately, so. Just reassure people that we do have it under control and we'll still have Jubilee.
Anything else for Jamie? Moving on, city attorney, he's not here, whole business, property code violations? Anybody wanna talk about them, prehensives? Truck parking?
I have multiple emails into those people in Pratt and they said they were gonna be here and never show up.
Engines and power plant.
Maybe when I get back from here, I'll have some answers for you on maybe where we're headed here.
I think Jeff made it pretty plain that maybe slowing down on that because of that Brian or Dolly, that's why.
Well, you know, that's been, that's a pretty small shop. I mean, like I said, we've dealt with those guys for 40 years, but, um, it's not a, it's not a job that just everybody does. In the last 40 years, it's probably less than half of what it was when we put that engine in, so. You know, there's two other guys up there that are more than capable. And this is not the first automation they've done, they did one at Johnson before this, so. You know, I have no reason to believe that, that it's not gonna work. This might be a little slower than what we were hoping for, so. But we'll make it work, somehow or the other, and I'm sure Mike's just as concerned as anybody, so.
Bulk water project?
I didn't hear yesterday that we might be another four or six weeks out. It has another, one of those microprocessors that, um, you know, nobody can get right now in it. And that's the same way with every brand of empty. So that's what the holdup is, they finally let me know that, so. I'm searching for another one, whether to come up with it or not, just maybe just wait wherever we're at.
Swimming pool?
Um, I finally got, I kind of let Stephanie, we were making contact about getting everything ready and I didn't realize Pools Plus does commercial pools, so they are actually gonna come out and try to check it out for us. And they're the only ones that have said they'll come, so I said, please come on out. So we'll hopefully know more once they come.
Anything more on any of that stuff? You'll find in your package, there's a cleaning contract, that'd be the last one on whole business.
Steve didn't want to type anything out, but he said he wants to just continue, um, his, the way it's written and the same amount and everything like that. He didn't wanna write anything out.
So basically, same, same, uh, money, same, same price.
It's just.
Maybe one might be, uh, piano. So what if you split that contract into two? Let Steve take care of the senior center and that stuff over there and let Pam take care of this? Would that be interesting, that, you think, or?
Definitely check it.
Would be worth asking about? Yeah, I, I know he's, he's over there every day, pretty much.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm pretty sure he comes in here every morning and relocates the trash and.
Sure, I'm here too, yeah. I mean, I would be okay with that. Both, both of them. Mention it, both of them, so that would be something that would work.
I can do that.
Just discuss the next meeting?
Yep.
Okay, uh, moving on to new business.
I think he's just here.
Oh, just here, okay. Uh, new, you, you new business?
I wanna talk about a sewer.
Huh?
Is it, might wanna talk about a sewer?
Yeah.
If you wanted to.
Come on in.
This is under new business. This is under new business and you're late.
Well, that's a, that's a school bill. I just was gonna ask you a question about it and see what the steps are. I, I kinda talked to Jamie today and I saw you guys were here, so I, I stopped in.
Yep, so he came in, um, this afternoon and I just kind of let him know that we've been aware of the issue. I hadn't known about his issue until today, um, so I just kind of explained the steps that we were taking. And I did find out that we have rotted it with the company that we've been working with eight times. So your, I mean, your four is right on, so, you know, cause it could have been a couple in those days, a couple times each, so. Like, I, I told them exactly what I told you, um, we're gonna start with a letter that will be certified tomorrow and they will, they will know that we need to get this issue fixed and it's not something that can continue, so.
You know, I think, while we're discussing it again, I think you need to check with John and see if there's any type of repercussion of them doing what they're doing, causing the issues. You know, if it backs up into his house, it costs him money.
And the, I mean, and the other part of it is the backflow device. Like, and that's the, that's the bad thing for you as a, as a resident, or owning a residence in town, because there is a backflow, um, code. So all residents in the town are required to have a backflow for their homes because of issues like this. So that is something that would fall back on you. But I'm not saying like, hey, go spend all this money right now, cause it is something that we still need to address down there. And I know that there's something in the code about grease traps, I don't know if you've read that.
Well, yeah, I know, because I know the restaurants are all supposed to have a grease trap on them.
So I don't know if that's something that.
Because, do we still fight the one out there?
No, they're like we used to.
Going to the Mexican, or coming out to our left, left pump?
We used to fight it pretty regularly, but we haven't, I don't think we've been out there, well, it's been quite a while. You know, we did for several years, I mean, we fought it pretty hard, but I think after the last discussion we had with them, you know, we kinda shut that down.
And that's, I mean, and that's, I think, kind of where, when I talked to John about it, you know, he doesn't want me to go guns blazing, obviously, but like, say, hey, and let you guys be aware of it, so if you, if you know who to talk to, then, and let them be aware. But I was also gonna ask him about the, the trap or whatever, because it said that it will be provided.
But it's actually our line that's getting plugged up, it's not, I mean, he might have had problems because our line's plugged up from what somebody else is doing.
Correct, exactly.
He's just the lowest person.
Right, right. The first time they came out and did it, it was Jubilee Weekend and, I mean, I think that was a 50-50 deal, I think that was the city backed up, but also, uh, someone that lived there for a month or so, so that deal I can understand. But if the other three times I've backed up, each time, like, a friend came over one time, he just took like a peek at it, went and pulled the dill, city's backed up. All three times the city's been backed up. And for as much as you guys know, it's, uh, when that happens, I mean, that's all you can worry about is that. You can't go do nothing else, cause you gotta get that fixed. It's like I told her, I, I mean, I talked to Kevin this morning, I was gonna go spend $2,000 today to get a new sewer. So, but, yeah, I think you got everything, always that.
Yeah, it is a huge problem, other than an inconvenience for you and costing a little bit of money, but it may become a worse issue were it, yes.
Well, and it, it's just something that's continued, cause I, I believe our guys have had conversation too, so.
But if we've been there eight times? That's too bad.
That's too much, yeah.
And especially if it's not because of our sewer line. You know, I could understand if it was, you know, we've got a break and it's.
Have you guys got pictures of any of?
I haven't been up there with them, I don't know.
Yeah, we were there this summer. So. The backflow deal, I mean, whatever I need to do to get my end up to go to.
Right, I mean, it's not, it's not something that I'm gonna go to your house and say, hey, you don't have a back, like, I mean, it's legit for you. Like, it is for you as a property owner to, to help you.
It's to keep that from happening, yeah. I would imagine it will probably do.
Right, yeah, I didn't know anything about it till I started here either.
Cause we've had two or three other people that have had, you know, it is unfortunate that the city sewers do back up or they plug up and goes into somebody's basement, but we're still not liable to take care of their problem in their house, even though it happened on the city, because we have an ordinance that says you're required to have a backflow preventer and if you don't, that's on you. Even if, yeah, even if that issue does get fixed, you know, it's not saying that it still could back up at some point. Right, from other reasons. And obviously, your house is the lowest, so it's gonna come in your house first, so it'd be a good idea.
Well, it's, I, I talked to Chavez today, I gave him a call after, I talked to you and seen that they had any problems, which I figured that then it'd be, one behold, they don't have any issues.
Right.
But I guarantee you it wasn't, no pie enough.
But, yeah.
She's gonna keep looking into it, to get it fixed.
Like the start, for sure. Yeah.
I think a letter, certified letter to them.
Yeah.
Be a good place to start. If we have to go further with it, we would.
That's not playing.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you, yeah.
Okay, I'd, uh, we apparently need a motion for executive session, five minutes for potential hire.
Who's that to include?
Uh, Jamie, council meeting, or council and mayor. You want Cory in here?
Cory, no.
Cory?
I'd make a motion for a five-minute executive session for pot, potential hire to include council, city clerk, and everybody.
Got a motion on the table and a second, all paper? All opposed? Passes 4-0.
I would make a motion to hire Rachel Burns for the skating rink. At $15 an hour, I think is what we decided. For no more than 10 hours a week, so.
Got a motion and a second on the table to hire Rachel Barnes for a skating rink employee. All, all of them? All opposed? Passes 4-0. Any other thing you guys wanna talk about and discuss? If not, I'd entertain a, okay, adjourn. Got a motion, a second, and adjourn, all paper? All opposed?